I will call our work session to order of September eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and it is one topic. Um, with Neil Ruland on our mission, vision and core va- oh, and core values. All right. Sorry about that, City Manager. Um, I'll pass it right to Neil.
Sounds good. Uh, well, thank you, everybody. Uh, I know we've been through this once before, but just to give you a very, very small. Uh, explanation of kind of process. So we held our facilitation back in June. I then held a facilitation with, uh, other, you know, city staff leaders, uh, directors, uh, several other managers. Um, I also reached out to staff and had many conversations about staff. So I've really, you know, had conversations throughout the organization. Um, about, you know, you know, what is our mission? What is our vision? Not asking them like, hey, write it up for me or anything like that. But really ask more probing questions to try to find some theme. And I would say the most, I would say most encouraging, most exciting things. One of the things that I said at the beginning of this process was. I think we all know what it is. We just don't have it caught up. And the themes that came up from your session, from city leader's session, from staff conversations, like the, the themes are there and we were hitting on the same type of stuff, which is really awesome. Like I was, I was really excited to see that. It was a little, hopefully a little bit easier to kind of put something into words. As opposed to like, you know, you guys were up left field and directors were in center field and regular, you know, line staff were in right field. So I thought that overall this process was really, really encouraging and something that I'm very passionate about. And the city manager's passion about, I think everyone in this room is passionate about, is really building a cohesive culture that we can all get behind. And a lot of that starts with mission, vision and values. Many of you in this room started that value journey, you before my time here. And I think that throughout the years, um, as council has changed a little bit, as staff has changed a little bit, as we've overcome a lot of challenges together. We've been able to refine those values, not necessarily replacing them, but just making sure that they really are accurate. Because, you know, the beginning part of this type of process, we do, it's not, you know, putting down one definition and going, you know, it doesn't need to be set in stone. But finding a way that we then, as I said, put, build that foundation together as a group. Um, and that's really what we're talking about today. I like to use this one. Um, I did, let's just say borrow it. Um, I didn't make this one, but this is kind of showing how everything really works. You know, your, your mid, your vision feeds into your mission, into your goals, into, it's not on there, but also your, uh, core values, strategy tactics. And eventually action steps. And what you're really seeing here, in a nutshell, in my opinion, this is a strategic plan. It's a fun graphic, you know, because communications people, we love our graphics. Um, but that's kind of what we're talking about here. And that's why it's important because without, you know, the top part of that pyramid. Yeah, you can still get a lot of stuff done. Don't get me wrong. If you just did a bunch of acts and steps and set some goals together, you, you could accomplish a lot of things. But, you know, what in the end are we really, uh, trying to accomplish? That's on me, Carrie. I apologize. Um, what were you really trying to accomplish? And what's the greater goal for the most part? And I'll go through these quickly, but you know, a mission statement, it's the finite piece of it. It's the, you know, what we do in day in, day out. It's the nuts and bolts of what we're here for. It'd be real easy if we could write a mission statement that was super duper long. I know I am like captain verbose essentially of the city. Why say, you know, fourteen words when I can say six thousand words because I'm a chatter? And but that's not what a mission statement's all about. It's something that hopefully, as we integrate into the culture of the organization. It's something that every staff can point to and say, this is why we're here. This is what we do. And this is also something that it just doesn't change all the time. Like really, you have companies that have had mission statements that have really held the test of time of twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years sometimes. Because, you know, they put so much work into it and it's something they really, really believe in. Vision statement, that's a little bit different. I know sometimes people have difficulty with this. I know I struggle with this, um, a lot of times. But vision is really where we're going. Like it's aspirational. It's almost, you know, I would say within reason in a perfect world. You know, if we maybe didn't have a pandemic and we maybe didn't have this, that, or thing, but it's like, hey, this is what we want to make. This organization and what we want to do overall, like, like the driving force, like, you know, at the end of the road. But as I said, it's much more, you know, can't put your finger on it quite as easily, but like, you know, I'd say more of the driving force. And similar to a mission statement, this isn't something that, you know, your vision statement, you just don't create in two thousand and twenty-one and then we toss out in two thousand and twenty-three. If we do this correctly, the hope is that this is something that we can take. And, you know, whether staff come, staff go, council members come, council members go. It's this, you know, joint statement that's saying, this is where we're going and this is why we need to go there. Here's what we had before. Um, this was the city's, at least based on my research. Um, as well as the help of former assistant city manager, uh, Pam Demetrinko. Richfield's mission is to be known as the best place to live, work, learn and do business in the Twin Cities area. We are a customer-focused and caring community that strives to foster a sense of neighborliness. Now, to be honest with you, there's not, like, I don't want to like, I'm not here to like disparage everything. It's really not my goal. I'm just trying to like, do stuff based on best practice. And there's some good stuff in here. Like we are customer-focused. Like you look at our core values that, you know, we put together. You know, we're community-centered. It's kind of right there. And also, you know, caring, you know, that's, I think that's a good, you know, caring community. That's a good piece as well. But then you get into like, at least in my opinion, you get into like neighborliness, like, I know you can kind of like look that up, but like that really gets almost too nebulous. Where like, I don't know what that means. Like you could like not talk to your neighbor and say, I'm a great neighbor because I don't like, you know, wake them up at four o'clock in the morning to mow my lawn. But it does get like a little bit too abstract, whereas you want your mission to be a little bit more finite. Now here's one that I actually, the current vision of the city is Richfield, Ellipses, uh, your urban hometown in the heart of the Twin Cities. I don't know how that's a vision for us. Like it's not a bad marketing line. Like I'm not mad about it or anything. I just think it might belong somewhere else. Especially when like, you know, I think we've come to terms with like urban hometown being one word and this one essentially is two. So I'm just saying like, it's not terrible, but like, it's really not a vision statement. So when we had our conversations and I've had the pleasure of listening to it on multiple occasions to make sure I get all, you know, all the big words and stuff. Um, the, the key important concepts, the things that we really got out of our, when we're talking about the vision for Richfield. Um, the things that were coming out was creativity, was opportunity, was connectedness, um, community-centric, engaged. You know, people have a voice, um, that really, you know, as staff or resident advocates. That really, you know, there are no gaps in services when it comes to a vision for the city, um, and for our organization, connecting residents with opportunity. That's similar to the first one, and building and strengthening partnerships. As I was saying before we started all this, the really, really cool thing is, and I'm, I honestly, like, I have all these recorded. If you guys ever want to spend two, three hours of your time, you can listen through these and these are not like me trying to build this up and saying, hey, I'm just going to put the words you guys said and add a couple of different ones in here and call it a day. These are exact words that are taken from talking to city leaders where they, you know, agree. The connectivity, the opportunity, collaboration, you know, some of these like, you know, with collaboration, it, it's just synonyms from some of the stuff that we were talking on the previous slide. Um, proactive, build partnerships, close knit, pride in the community, no more gaps. Resident advocates, resilient, welcoming, impressive, unique, community-specific. Uh, big things in small packages, accessible and participation. Once again, lots of similar, like, the concepts are there. We have that same feeling of, you know, really what our vision is. And then these are some of the quotes that I really liked from staff when talks about our vision. Um, here's an individual, the first individual, I grew up here. I own a home here and I work here. Richfield has always been a strong, welcoming community that has always done its own thing. Once again, they're welcoming, strong, impressive. Um, the next, residents and staff are a team. We're stronger together than we are apart. That's great. I'd love to put that on a T-shirt. Um, lastly, my, my friends who work for other communities almost never hear from residents. Knowing that our residents care and want to keep this community looking good makes me proud of the work I do. I think it's, I think it's great stuff. So, uh, what I ended up doing is I tried to try to take everything and trying to follow in best practice and everything. I know you've seen this presentation. Really what I put together and after conversations with city manager and also several other leaders within the organization, thinking that, um, my proposed vision statement for the organization would be, um, our vision for, you know, this is a community where all are connected and can access opportunities. At this point, I'd love to get any of your feedback on this. We can go into mission after this. I know I'm really passionate about it, but I'd love any thoughts or feedback you have on this. If you think I'm close or the group that's working on this is close, if it's off the mark. Once I said, this is aspirational. This is what we're going for. I know it's a, I know it's shorter, but like that's, you know, kind of the name of the game with these, but.
Thank you so much, Neil. Feedback from council members. Council member Whelan.
Um, can I ask a question first? The, uh, what you put at the beginning of like the purpose of each of these was helpful. But one thing I wasn't as clear on as I started thinking about this more. How much, um, and I'm curious for both the mission and, mission and vision statement, if they're the same or different. How much are these like internal and like meant to guide us and staff? And how much are they external and more of, um, I mean, at the far end of that spectrum, even like a marketing type thing? Like are, are these meant to be a slogan? Are they meant to be something that residents will see regularly and like, get behind? Or is it more about guiding our work internally?
That is a fantastic question. Um, and it is, it is the former. It is an organizational pieces. Trust me, if I was building you taglines and advertising sayings, they would make these look like, you know, it's, it's about, it's, it's not about kitschy sayings and, you know, you know, turn of phrases or anything like that. No, this is, you know, I can't say it's a hundred percent internal. I would probably say it's like ninety percent internal, ten percent. Because I think that it's important that once, you know, we decide a mission and vision, that once staff know it, and that staff, there is some level of, if, I don't know, a resident calls us and asks us what we're all about or there, or that, you know, it would help maybe saying what our mission and vision is to conversations with residents. But no, it's more of an internal, you know, organizational, cultural, um, piece and, you know, guiding force for the organization, both of them. It doesn't really, you know, interchangeably. They're for, they're different purposes, but, you know, more in, vastly more internal than external.
Go ahead, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one thing that did strike me though, when I, uh, read this is that it really captures the urban hometown, which is, which is different, is more of a marketing, more external. Because the connected is, you know, the hometown part of it and then access the opportunities and was more the urban setting and like in the heart of the Twin Cities. So I thought that it, wh- while it is internal, I do think it will drive what we put out there externally.
Yeah, and at least for the thinking process for this, I guess breaking it down would be like, you know, uh, uh, with the connected, it's the participation. It's, it's people being connected to their government, you know? It's also staff being connected to each other. It's staff being connected to you, to you folks. It's also you folks being connected to residents. Like that's the connection piece of it and the participation piece of it of what we, you know, hear a lot about where we have much more of an engaged community or out in the community more than we've ever been. Um, and the opportunities, you know, that really does go to a lot of the equity work that we're doing right now. Um, it also goes to, you know, different programs that we're creating. It's, you know, providing, you know, more safety net options and things like that. I guess I should have started with what are the components of this that I'm actually, uh, working on, but we got there eventually.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple.
Well, we talk a lot about building an equitable community and so this hits both parts of that. So I think it's, I would, I would appreciate, I appreciate this. I think it's good.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I like it better hearing Neil describe it, um, than when I just read it, you know, isolated in the PowerPoint that was sent out. My concern is you're not there to describe it every time this is read. And I don't feel like, I think you did, you know, there was a really impressive process to boil everything down. And I just feel like maybe you boiled it down too far to the point where like, I don't, I can't think of any suburb that wouldn't say that's an appropriate tagline or vision statement for us. And so when you describe these things, I can understand the thought process behind them. I just don't feel like it conveys much that's unique about Richfield specifically. And that's, I guess that's kind of a general comment with both of these. I actually think this is a little bit stronger than the mission statement, but just reflecting on both of those, I just worry that they're, they could apply to any public organization.
I have a question about that. So how does that, um, concept like apply to the vision and the mission statement? Is that, is that fine? Is that something, do you really want to have it be strongly connected to Richfield specifically?
Well, I think it, it does need to obviously reflect, you know, Richfield and us as an organization. Um, but a lot of the conversations, um, specifically me and the city manager had is the difficulty when it comes to creating these for, uh, government organizations, specifically municipalities, you know, what are we in the business of as a municipality a lot of times? Uh, just saying the vast majority of it, when you go through budgets, we do fire, we do public safety and we do, uh, public works. That's, you know, seventy, eighty percent of it. So it does produce that challenge where if we did have, you know, something very, very distinct that like we do different, but I think we do better in a lot of our services than maybe some other cities. Once again, I'm incredibly biased in that regard. Um, but it does provide a challenge where, um, peppering in almost too much uniqueness because we are in the business of providing, you know, high-quality municipal services. So it's a great question. I think that you got to try to, you know, thread the needle as best you can, but it does provide, like, as we talked about, it's, it's just produce somewhat of a challenge.
I also think, you know, you do want something that resonates with people and is really basic. And, um, this to me captures what, um, Chris Link and others have said a lot is that we're in the quality of life business. And one of my favorite mission statements is Disney's, we make people happy. Well, a lot of entertainment companies make people happy, but it is, it really captions the essence of what they're trying to do. And so I think that, um, I take your point that it is, um, you know, you could try and make it unique to Richfield. But I also, you also want to boil it down to its very essence.
Councilmember Whelan.
Um, I guess I'll share, I had, uh, and I'm trying to get to like a point where I can explain this better. But I had maybe a similar reaction where when I first saw it, it was, um, and I don't know if this is a sign that I'm too cynical sometimes, but it, it was a little too, uh, I don't know, abstract or grandiose, um, that it, it didn't feel real necessarily or grounded. And I think, um, yeah, so I'm, but I, again, among explaining it, I completely agree. Like when you explain it, I get excited about it. When you talk about like, no, this is the urban hometown, like I get it, but I, um, I, I do wonder about exactly that piece of could it be more directly connected to Richfield? And I guess I'm, I saw, I, I think the general theme is that less is more. Um, but I saw for the, I think it was the mission statement in your notes, you said specifically, never more than a hundred words. Um, I mean, this is ten. Is like fifteen okay for a vision statement or like what are we working within?
No, it really, yeah, it, the parameters, you know, really are what we want it to be. I think that, you know, from the research that I've done, um, and a lot of them does come from, you know, private companies. Because they're usually a lot better at this type of stuff than, you know, we are as municipalities. I, that shorter is better. Um, it's something that you can extrapolate from. Because I guess, at least for my example in regards to this is like, you know, opportunities, that word rings differently for everybody. Connection, you know, that word rings differently for everybody. And you can then, you know, to provide that, you know, that vision, that aspirational piece of it. Um, to allow, you know, different levels of staff, you know, different levels of leaders, um, to take that and, you know, have a positive meeting across the board, um, or something to work for, you know, as they're coming up with, um, new ideas or tweaking current ones or even potentially getting rid of things, you know, how, you know, how it relates to what we do. That I, I do think that less is more in this regard, but you're saying like, do I think that adding five more words would hurt the overall, uh, you know, what we're going for? I do not. Um, but I do think that, you know, really trying to make it so that staff can remember it and say it and point to it and things like that, I think is important. And the shorter that you can keep it kind of does help.
Councilmember Supple.
I think getting back to the first question that council member Whelan asked about what the purpose is. If this is for internal, then I think this is fine. Like you said, it's, it, if it was going to be a marketing thing, it should be more uniquely Richfield. But I do think for internal purposes, I'd be fine with this.
Go ahead, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So originally I had suggested to Neil, like we put a period and then say, we are the urban hometown. And he's like, no, that's marketing. You're getting into marketing. But I think it can be, there can be a simple addition to make it more of an external marketing statement.
Do you have a comment? Oh, no, sorry. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I actually would feel more comfortable with that. I, I think maybe I'm just taking it too literally. On the one hand, it, you know, it doesn't concern me that much if it's just internal, but if we truly do see this at the top of our pyramid and this is going to guide decisions, I can't tell me, tell that this would guide any decision specifically or it doesn't say anything about our values. And I'm just looking, I looked at other suburbs and I looked at Minneapolis's and I actually thought Neil might think this is terrible because it is really wordy. But, um, and you're, you're the expert, but I, this tells me about Minneapolis. Minneapolis is an intentionally compassionate city where each of us can reach our full potential. We're caring for one another, eliminating racial disparities, improving our environment and promoting social well-being. So, you know, this kind of overlaps with our core values and that's probably more specific than we need to be. But I get a good sense of what's important to Minneapolis from that, um, in a way that is important to me, that I, I have some sense of it. It's not completely unique. A lot of cities can make similar claims, but, um, I get a taste of what, what that government, that entity has prioritized.
Are there comments? Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you. Um, this is maybe more of a thinking out loud, but in reacting to your comments, I, I think as an internal piece, um, we're not necessarily comparing ourselves to other communities in the same way that you're doing with marketing. And so I do think even as it is, um, it, it does speak to like where we're going and like who we want to be. And as a, not as a comparison tool, but as a like, I mean, on, on any given decision, like, is this going to like build more community cohesion? Is this going to increase access and like to the, the quality of opportunities? A very broad definition of that, like, is this going to increase how many people can access that? That I, I think those are, um, those are strong values. And so I, I do like it. I think now what I'm coming around to is if anything were changed, I'm wondering about, like to make it more unique to Richfield, I wonder about even just one or two adjectives in front of community or in front of opportunities. But I, as I try and do that, I'm not happy with any of the things I think of. So maybe it's not worth wordsmithing and that keeping it more straightforward and simple is, is better.
Thank you. Um, I think the comment you just said about how, I mean, I do think that this really boils down very directly what we do want to move forward. Um, I think I want to keep seeing like the rest and talking through the rest so I can kind of get that bigger picture to put anything more, um, because it does feel so simple in a good way. And I just want to also like, but also I want to connect the dots still as we continue on, um, and see how I feel.
For sure. Um, we can do that. I do like, this was, this has been fantastic feedback. One, I specifically like how specific it was. Usually things like this, I don't get specific feedback, so, um, we'll keep going with this, but like, I think we can take this back and then, you know, maybe like if we decide to add, you know, a couple of words, five words, something like that, to try to richfield it up just a little bit more. We can tag on, you know, a quick fifteen-minute work session or something like that on top of something else. Because I know you're always looking for just a little bit longer work sessions, um, that we can, you know, bring something back. But I do appreciate the feedback. I feel like, at least for me, unless I'm hearing this incorrectly, I think we're heading in the right direction, especially from not having anything. We're, you know, leaps and bounds of where we were, you know, last week or something. So I will, uh, I will take that feedback. I do appreciate. And honestly too, everyone in this room knows, if you, you know, wake up tomorrow on the mission or vision side of the bed, shoot me an email, call me, text me. You know, maybe watch a couple of YouTube videos and see how these are kind of fun to, and interesting and challenging all at the same time to put together. Um, I'm always open for feedback. All right. The nice thing is, so we'll move right directly into mission as well. Um, same type of thing I was talking about before where it's really, really encouraging. I'm really, really encouraged because the di- so the different levels of conversation that I've had throughout the organization. It's, everyone seems to be on the same page of what we're here to do. And for, uh, for council, you talked about core services. I think it was council member Troutman jumped out immediately. Oh, our mission is core services. That's what we're here to do. Um, customer service, quick, you know, response. Um, meeting expectations, finding the gaps and plugging them. We're caring. We're family oriented for both our community and for staff. Um, we've, we're developing relationships. We're creative. Once again, collaboration comes in, pride in our work. Uh, we value input. We have the best services around. You know, we talk about snowplowing. We talk about water. We talk about, you know, really those value added, um, providing resources and service availability. And then with our leadership team, you know, within the city, saying the same type of things. But they were like, oh yeah, we don't just want to meet, we want to exceed expectations with the services that we offer. Um, provide those resources. Core services came up again, you know, that's what we're here for. Seeking value input, fill the gaps, serve everyone. Um, that's caring. We're family-oriented, high-level services, develop relationships. Pride in the work we do, creativity, multi-dimensional, efficient, approachable, and keeping residents staff informed. And some of the quotes I got from staff that really stuck out to me, um, we're not like other cities. We're special. We look for outside-the-box ways to improve services. Not a lot of places do that. Next staff member said, we do not have, um, oh, a ton. I even missed a word. We do not have a ton of staff, but pound for pound, I would say that we get more done and get it done faster than other cities. It's pretty cool. Uh, s- last one, snow plowing is a good example of the work we do. We have, we have tweaked the service little by little over the years to make sure it meets the needs of our staff and our residents. So what I did, cramming all that together, um, as I said, not always the easiest. And I'm going to explain this one this time because I'm going to do much better than my vision presentation. Um, the mission statement, you know, the mission of Richfield is to create infrastructure and provide services to make lives better. I really, I, I really have to thank the city manager. She's the one that kind of helped me tweak this with infrastructure. Because at first when I saw it, I was just like, roads, 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 roads. And if you actually think, thank you, council member Supple, you're so much better at this than I am. Because infrastructure means so much more. We have housing infrastructure. For me, we have communication infrastructure. We have, you know, we do have traditional road infrastructure, but infrastructure means so much more. And especially if we start getting people to think of, I would say lowercase i infrastructure as opposed to uppercase I infrastructure. Understanding is that, you know, really that's what we do here. We create the systems, um, or infrastructures, um, that allow people to drink their water, to travel on their roads. The roads themselves sometimes, um, really pick any type of service we want. I'm really, you know, public safety. We create that infrastructure of public safety. We create that infrastructure that if your house does start on fire or you do start choking on something at home, you can call nine-one-one and Rescue One will be out the door within seconds. That's the infrastructure piece of it. Um, and the other piece of it is, you know, it's that service, it's looking at those services to make people's lives better. You know, really like I'm saying, mission statement wise, at least where we kind of came up as a team, was that you're looking at each one of those services and asking yourself that question, does this service improve the lives of residents? Or could this service change, like we're talking about snow plowing over the years? Can it be tweaked to make residents' lives better in some way, shape or form? Asking that question over and over again. So that's kind of the thought process behind that one. So I know you've seen this yesterday. Really any feedback you want, like I, I said, I want the feedback, you know, love it, hate it. I promise you, you won't hurt my feelings in any way, shape or form. But just let me know what your initial thoughts on this are.
Councilmember Supple.
I'm thinking that it might be more clear if you said to create systems and infrastructure to provide services to make life better. Because like you said, most people jump straight to roads when they hear infrastructure. Even though I know you mean the broader form of it and the organizational infrastructure.
The communication person has problems with it. Chances are other people will too. That's a good point.
Councilmember Whelan.
Yeah, I would echo that. And I, um, I was chuckling a bit to myself when the federal government was talking infrastructure. I don't know if anyone else saw this thread of Twitter, but, uh, people were pointing out that like, oh, this is infrastructure and this is infrastructure. To the point it became a joke. They were saying like random obscure things where infrastructure.
Well, especially in that bill, like there's childcare and there's all, you know, the, I get, yeah.
Yeah. And, and so I think a lot of that is infrastructure, but, um, yeah, to the, to the point, um, council member Supple just made. I was struck by that word. I'm feeling more comfortable with this again, now that I recognize it's much more of an internal statement. But just, uh, that infrastructure and even services are words that staff use all the time. I don't know any residents who talk about what we do with, I mean, they'd maybe use infrastructure for roads. But like, no one, no one in their like everyday language talks about like, I'm going to go call the city about their services. And so, um, but yes, I think even just adding systems, um, and I think again, since it's already very short, I think it's fine to just do systems and infrastructure. Um, but I, I like, um, But I I like, I like that the, just make lives better. I appreciate that that is just in plain language. And I think the more that this can be in like everyday common language is helpful in terms of like internalizing it for folks. So I appreciate that.
And that's the, you know, I'm sure staff will hear this, like, that would be, you know, I know this falls more than outside of communication engagement. You all know I wear a lot of hats, but at the same time, I'm, it would be, once we get these fine-tuned, I essentially, I think, become the indoctrinator in chief when it comes to internally. Where like, if I have to, you know, paint them on walls or honestly make, add them to staff reports of like, how does this specifically go to the mission of the city? And I know that that, for a lot of people, sounds like, why would you spend the time doing this? I'm saying like, this stuff is so important to develop a culture and, you know, a cohesiveness here that, you know, at first, it will be just like implementing anything really quite, I don't want to call this radical, but really just a major departure from how we normally do business can be difficult. But in the end, you know, committing to something, you know, whether it's this, whether it's something completely different, whether it's this vision, whether it's something completely different, you know, really does help, you know, immensely when it comes to staff retention, you know, positive work environment, really things like that.
Other comments? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I guess I have the same, the same general concern that it's not specific enough. But I think if we, whichever one you think it's more appropriate to Richfield eyes, I think that's fine. I I think, because they oftentimes appear together and they're complementary to one another. So I think that's fine. I I will say, I just like, when I read it, I kind of tripped over the word infrastructure because having that like big four-syllable word is like the third word in there. Seems a little striking, but now you kind of sold me on why it makes a lot of sense. So I think the systems and seems like a way to soften that a little bit, just to get a little bit deeper in the statement, but still have that word.
Then you run into the double and, though, I just realized.
I would switch the and that's after infrastructure to two, because the purpose of creating the systems is to provide the better ser-
I think that maybe some more, a little bit more descriptor on this too would be helpful. And then I'm thinking like to make lives better, to provide services. I don't know, is this a grammar thing or or not? But that make lives better, that seems like a little more like, it does make lives better. I don't even know if that makes sense, but to make lives better is almost like, feels more hopeful, like versus, you know, that we're actually making lives better. And I keep thinking.
That's fine with me.
Concepts around, like, you know, providing excellent services and infrastructure or something like that, or delivering quality, or or I don't know, just thinking of some types of qualifiers or descriptors on some of the words. But at the end of the day, I think absolutely that is the core of what we do. And then, but aren't the mission and vision like out, can't residents, shouldn't they be able to go to our website and read that mission and vision? So it will be something that's very public.
But it's, yeah, it'll be public and available, but it's, you know, the the rallying cry that really they are is internal focused. The core values and some of those things as well are, they're a little bit more external facing. But, you know, mission and vision, like, you know, just like, you know, City of Minneapolis is, it's available or any, you know, company for the most part, like Disney's, like, it's available, but it's, you know, the the usage for it is the internal piece. I'd love for every, honestly, I'd love for every resident to know what our mission and vision are. It'd make my job a lot easier and make your jobs a lot easier.
Councilmember Whelan.
I just want to echo, because I was thinking through, like, where is, I mean, equity has been such a focus for us. Where is it in this? And how do we, like, address the fact that, like, historically, government has made some lives better and not all? And I think maybe at this point, I'm like reading too much into words. But I think the switching to to that and just this, I mean, circling back to what we talked about at the Equity Work Session of like, we're actually going to start measuring more of our outcomes and making sure that they are in fact improving, that I think it may be that simple. But I would be open to other ideas on how, how or whether equity is already in here or if that needs to be added more explicitly.
Like even like an all lives or everyone's lives, something like that?
I would suggest that you say to create equitable systems and infrastructure. Because I don't think there'd be a whole lot of political connotations if you tried to say to make all lives better.
And then equitable is a word that, you know, I think for some people feels very comfortable and makes sense. But then again, for others, it's not, not to not, not, I'm not saying we shouldn't use it, but just thinking about how to communicate that point too. City manager Rodriguez.
Thank you. I just want to point out, I mean, we're getting to the core values, but I don't think it would be often that the mission and the vision are not presented with core values, which have much more detail, including a whole core value on equitable. Just something to, I don't think you have to capture all elements of the core values in these statements.
Are there comments? Okay. Oh, city manager.
I just want to clarify really quickly. At first, I thought I heard that you would replace infrastructure with systems, but that's not what you're saying. You're saying systems, comma, or.
Systems and.
Systems and infrastructure, comma, and to provide better services. Okay.
So what I heard was something along the lines of to create equitable systems and infrastructures that provides service, or to provide services that make lives better.
Any comments? Otherwise, we can keep going. All right, we can keep going and come back if needed.
Yep, thank you. Well, you're done with me. I will contribute to the next part, but I'll hand it over to the city manager to talk about our core values.
So I could ask one quick tangent before we go.
Go ahead.
I've always wondered in the email signatures, we have our logo, this is urban hometown, and then you have a great place to thrive next to it. Is that going to go away or does any of this replace that? I've always found it very confusing that these emails that are responses to residents or responses to business owners have these two competing slogans like right in every email signature.
I, so that came about before I was here. City clerk might be able to know about this, but my understanding, that was something that was for, had something to do with internal human resources almost. I didn't know why it was in our sig block because most, I think, our emails are internal. That's my understanding of it. If it was up to me, it would have been gone a long time ago because it doesn't have anything to do with the tagline of the city, any type of mission, vision, or anything like that. But I think that it's something that, only because it happened before I was here, before the city manager was here, I think we need to have some conversations. But I think if at all possible for messaging and stuff, it'd be very important that if it is not like, our tagline are really applicable to any program or anything we're doing right now, getting rid of it at least for me, would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, I I agree. I think it undermines the public-facing tagline, so.
But yeah, as I said, only because it came about before any of, you want to jump in on this?
That, that is.
Hold up.
Partially. Okay, so that that is partially correct. I I saw it as a, something that came down from human resources, just as you explained. And it wasn't, it was something that we did get to vote on as a staff together. There were numerous different ones that we could choose from, but that was the one that kind of like beat out all the rest of them. But I also do agree with that statement too, that it's not something that I really want on mine anymore, but that's just me.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So thanks for that point. And I think this is, this is the time, right, to to address those kinds of things. Because, you know, when, once we get the vision and the mission and the core values, we start building out the strategic plan and then we're embedding all of that, we we should have those taglines and those marketing pieces that are all consistent with all of it. So thanks for pointing that out. So Neil graciously said that this is, this is for me to introduce, but he also very much helped with all of it, which I really appreciate. So our core values, I I have heard from you all, I've heard from directors, and I've heard from staff. People really do like our core values and feel like they're, they are close to capturing things that are Richfield-specific and and our priorities. So there's very little tweaks that I think we need to make, and that's what I heard from you when we presented the last time. These are the things that we we heard and we tried to incorporate into some of the new statements. So proportions, the proposals for the, to the changes to core values, fiscally responsible. We heard from you that maybe stewardship is a better term for it, that it is broader than just financial resources. It really is human, natural, financial. So also, we heard, I was really impressed, I think it was councilmember Troutman, talked about, you know, trying to create a a community that's thriving, that's prosperous, but also equitable. And so very much trying to incorporate that into the values as well. And then celebrate diversity and equitable. We felt we could combine that into one core value. And so we are promote, proposing that and stating very explicitly removing barriers to create opportunities. And if we, if we're achieving equity, we're also achieving community, or inclu- inclusion, sorry. So what we came up with for stewardship is the City of Richfield manages all of its resources, whether it be human, natural, or financial, in a responsible manner. The city aims to provide services that promote a prosperous and healthy community in the most fiscally responsible and sustainable way. Feedback.
Feedback from folks.
I'm happy with this. I think it's reflects what what I had to, I had to say, and I think it still includes the fiscal responsibility, but it's framing it in a way that I find more helpful.
I'm seeing nods.
Yep, agreed.
All right. And then for equitable, the City of Richfield is dedicated to building a diverse, inclusive, and equitable hometown. The city seeks to remove barriers and connect all residents with opportunities. Richfield will reduce inequity by focusing on areas of greatest disparities. Feedback.
Council, oh, sorry, councilmember Whelan, did you raise your hand? Did you know, did I see that? Oh, sorry.
And both Neil and I did work with Equity Administrator Martinez Gavina. Sorry, I was going to say Equity Administrator Blanca, geez, on the, on the language. So I don't know if you have anything to add.
And saying with this one too, is we're, as we advance in our, in our equity journey as well, I would say that the first several, you know, would, will probably be pretty, I would imagine, static. But this is one that I think that we need to be open as we're learning more, as our Equity Administrator is finding out more about, you know, where we currently stand, where our community stands, what our community needs. Where this one, I think, we need to be very open for growth. And as also how people get a little more comfortable with the language and some of, you know, the terminology.
I just wanted to add in terms of this specific statement, I think it's very, one of the the comments that I had is that it's, it's very critical that as we move forward, we find ways to center race as it is the common denominator as to how we move this work forward. So I was okay with having this statement as is, as is right now, as long as we do have that caveat in maybe providing some input in the future and then making sure that the rest of the work that we do as a city, that we are explicit about leading with race in in the area of equity. Just wanted to make that quick statement.
Thank you.
And I think, without saying it's, you know, city manager intent as well, we're, we're very open with this being an open book in regards to if changes need to be made to this one. I think it's very important culturally for an organization to, once you have your mission, your vision, your core values, to stick with them, you know, so you can build around them. But as I said, you know, equity, which is not the newest term or concept for everyone, but for a lot of people it is, they're still really new to this language and terminology. So trying to make something that staff can connect to, that residents can understand as well. And then, as I said, being able to move this definition, well, keeping it obviously where it needs to be, but also said, you know, if it does need to move, I think I am, the city manager, is very comfortable in this definition moving as it needs to, as we grow in our journey as a city.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I'm not really asking for a change. I'm just kind of curious about that last sentence because it's so specific. And I'm doing this like thing in my brain where I'm like really excited about like the snow plowing thing. I think it's a really good policy change. And then I'm like, well, is that the area of the greatest disparity? Like, how do we know what's greatest? Are we going to be holding ourselves to that standard? I'm just curious where that came from or what the intent is.
So I think that the the intent of the sentence is that we, when we're reviewing services, you know, when we're using that equity lens, we're looking at where is the greatest disparity? And right now, racial equity is the greatest disparity. So it's also making, being explicit that we are going to center racial dis- racial equity. And it's both and, the spokes of our diversity wheel have a lot of spokes. But racial disparity is is the greatest and that's where we need to be focused.
Okay, so it's about the type of equity as much as it is about like the service that's most inequitable? Or is it not about that at all?
No, it's, I think it's both and. So my explanation wasn't probably as clear as it should be. So it is very much looking at disparities. And wherever that is the greatest disparity, we're, we're going to put our most focus. But when you're reviewing an individual program, infrastructure, whatever, you're looking at what is the greatest disparity for that particular service.
Okay.
Yep, I was going to say the exact same thing, like for snow plowing, like.
Yeah.
I would say most glaring, but the the area where it seems that we could improve or reduce disparities would be in the conversations that we're having right now.
I'll just add a couple of things. I really like this one. I'm wondering if the term equitable in the first sentence can be changed to something else because I see like the title equitable and then in the first sentence equitable and then inequity again. And so I feel like there's an opportunity to kind of, like, I was thinking a city, the City of Richfield is dedicated to building a diverse, inclusive, and thriving hometown for all or something like, or hometown, something like that. So that's the goal. But then I love that how are we doing that is super important because I think this is where it gets really sticky is when we're not explicit about how we achieve this goal of equity and what that means. So I love to see it in there. And then I love that it's focused on reducing inequity by focusing on areas of greatest disparity. So for example, I think about all the housing programs that we have for homeowners and renters in the City of Richfield. And we have, you know, we've, an issue for many years was this move-up type of housing. Well, now the market is really kind of taking care of some of those different, you know, middle income and and people are deciding, given the market and affordability, that it is more financially feasible for them to expand their house versus whereas pre, you know, previously, maybe it was cheaper to just go somewhere else. And so the market is kind of helping in that area and we've invested there for a lot of years, but now we see huge racial inequities in homeownership rates. So how do we pivot our funding to focus on where this disparity is? And also, you know, being explicit with our residents, where we do have resources to focus on this, we're going to focus where the greatest need is. Because I think that can be an argument you can get back and forth with people. But I do really like it. And then I think having the conversation around being, I I say this at my work a lot, we are explicit about leading with race, but we're not exclusive, exclusively focused on race when it comes to equity. I just want to put on the record, I am very strong in that approach here with the City of Richfield, that we need to lead and focus with race and not be exclusive to race. But I want to be explicit and say that is the focus for me. And I don't know if that's something where it becomes an issue and kind of where the focus is, if we need to have a conversation at the city council level or whatever level to reiterate and get people's read on what that means. I'm happy to be a part of it. And I just want to say now, like, I'm very personally, I'm focused on leading with race. And there's so many reasons as to why and would be happy to discuss that further, but want to just put it out there. but want to just put it out there. Council member Wayland.
Um, a couple of thoughts. One, more of a question to the rest of the room. I recognize it may be implied, and so it's maybe fine that it's not in there, but I feel like especially in the early phases, um, a very significant chunk of our work is just going to be understanding, like there's, there's some disparities that are really obvious that we know about, and it's more of like figuring, honestly, some of them are not even figuring out how to fix it and just like committing to actually do it. Um, but there's also some that like we don't even like, I mean, we've talked about before, we don't track the data, we don't know for sure what the disparity is. And so I just wonder if, um, like in the second or third sentence, if even like the word identify or understand, like the city seeks to identify and remove barriers, or understand and remove barriers, or if, um, Richfield will reduce inequity by identifying or understanding, and then focusing on the areas of greatest disparity, or, um, I wonder if that would be strength in this. And then I, I also, just to piggyback on like the comments of both the mayor and our equity administrator, I guess I'm, I'm open to and think this would be stronger if we explicitly name race. I think you do then have to, it, it may need a whole another sentence or half sentence, because I, I think it's important to say like, that is one of the areas, if, that is the area of greatest disparity, but also is not the only one. Um, so I don't know if it's like a little tag on that last sentence or how that would work, but I, I'm not opposed to naming race as one of the greatest historical disparities that we haven't overcome yet.
City manager.
Thank you, mayor. I, I don't think we need a work session, and you all have been very, very clear that we are, we are centering racial inequities and leading with race, but it is not exclusive. Um, so I don't think there's a work session needed for that. We have tried to capture that here. And I, again, I think because you're applying that equity lens to different things. So for example, when you're looking at, um, you know, um, transportation projects, and you're looking at, um, uh, you know, putting things in for the folks with disabilities, that might not be the greatest disparity for that project. Um, so we're, we're trying to be as inclusive as possible with the language, but if it, if it isn't clear, we, you know, we can make tweaks to it.
I'll just respond to council member Wayland's, um, ask to the group. I, I think understanding would, I like that, um, and I think that's a really good point. Um, and I like it better than identify because so many times mainstream organizations are identifying in their own bubble, like what the issue is around equity versus understanding, like, you know, talks about a deeper, deeper level of knowledge versus, you know, just identification. So I like that suggestion. Other comments? Okay, I think we can go to the next one. Oh, go ahead. No, I didn't. Think about where.
Can I just clarify? So
Go ahead.
Do you two want race named more explicitly, or do you just want the identifying or understanding part added?
I don't have strong feelings.
I don't have strong feelings either, and I didn't have strong feelings as to where to put the understand. I just like the concept of including understanding because sometimes we aren't connect, collecting that data.
Okay. I, I like the understand identify thing. I, I don't know, I could, uh, adding race specifically, I think everybody, Katie made good points too about the issues with that. I also, I mean, unfortunately, it does just kind of make it a target of some, some in our community when you, when you put it in there. And I think it's very clear that the staff direction and the direction of this council is to center race, whether it's in there or not, so.
I guess I would put it in sentence two, from a communication standpoint.
Threat by barriers. That's what I was seeing it as too.
All right, we can go to the next one.
So these, these would be the new core values, and, um, Neil developed some new icons, which I think are pretty cool.
Council member Supple.
Um, I had talked to the city manager about in the community centered one. If there's no objection, I think it would be better to say to put its residents first. It is the resident focus to make all decisions based.
I'm sorry, I actually changed this. I apologize. I just don't know how, I must have sent the wrong copy because I changed all of those and, yeah.
I just thought it would be more inclusive to say residence.
I think you're very much right, and I did. It's so funny. I swear to you, I hundred percent did that like six hours ago. But yes, we'll make those changes again.
Council member Wayland.
Before I was talking about not overly simplifying, I did wonder, um, I'm, well, one, I will just say, I think I would echo what city manager Rodriguez said before. For me personally, like, these are the values I center as I make decisions, and so I appreciate that we are so clear and like, so aligned on this, um, that I, I don't know a whole ton of other elected leaders, but I know some where this is, there's not that level alignment, and it makes it very frustrating. So I very much appreciate this. I, the only thing I noticed is just that responsive and community centered have some of the same themes, whereas the other three are like each their own distinct ideas. And so I'm, I'm okay just going with this as is. I recognize that'd be more wordsmithing to try and combine those two, but I also just wanted to throw that out there, that I would be comfortable if it is more streamlined and easier to focus on these if we wanted to combine those two.
Other comments or questions? Go ahead, city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, mayor. Um, and thank you for the correction, uh, council member Supple. Um, I, we agree. As soon as you made the comment, we absolutely agreed it should be changed to resident instead of citizen. Um, actually, I'm going to ask communication manager Rueland, sorry Neil, I keep calling you commu- Neil, um, to respond to that because I think he has a really compelling reason to keep them separate because I originally thought, oh, you know, th- these two are similar, we could combine them.
Yeah, and I honestly was of a similar mindset where I was trying to, you know, whittle these down because, you know, I think you can get into trouble when you get to too few, and I don't, there is no number. Like you have organizations that have, you know, three core values. You have ones that have, it seems to be that three to seven is kind of the, the sweet spot, it seems, for best practices. And we actually went down that road of potentially combining responsive and community centered, and we were having conversations with city leadership and city staff is, we got a, a pretty big stop sign for a very good reason, that these, those words where you can see them making, like, obviously if you're community centered and you care about your residents, you're going to be responsive to your residents, and, you know, vice versa to some regards. But staff really view them as independently. They take so much pride in, you know, a lot of govern- I worked at different levels of government, and, you know, you contacted from, you know, a citizen taxpayer resident, and, you know, oh, we'll get to them, we'll get to them. Like residents here, staff here really, really valued, like, you know, we all know what, you know, Rachel Lindholm, our sustainability specialist, has been going through um, for the past year, and she is willing to respond to those p- to residents and contact her ASAP. So actually spelling that out means a lot too, and this goes down to our plow drivers, this goes down to our rec specialists, this goes down to our people at Wordlegish, it goes down to our DMD folks. That responsiveness is such a co- like truly, honestly, in my opinion, more than any single value there when it comes to staff and resonating, that responsiveness, and I s- I've seen the messages that you guys, I'm C C down with res- messages that you get from residents, you know, you know your counterparts in other cities, they'll get back to residents, but not with the level of zeal and passion and commitment, um, that, that you individuals. So that's the piece of it, where responsiveness and breaking those two apart, um, and the community centered does a lot to do with some of the things we talked about for mission, vision, and values, is community centered is, you know, tailoring those services, you know, making sure that whatever we're doing is Richfield specific, not so much, you know, oh, Minnesota specific, or, you know, Twin Cities specific, but, you know, coming up with those programs and ideas and concepts. So breaking those apart, I hope I'm doing as good of a job explaining this as I did previously, but that's where we got a little bit, and I don't say pushback, but like, where they really shared their passion with us, of those two things not being necessarily the same thing because they do value them very differently and are very passionate about both of them. It was, it was honestly some of the best conversations I've ever had with staff is them explaining to me why, hold up there, you know, young buff, what are you doing here?
Um, I would just add, I was thinking the same thing. That's a helpful, um, just helpful context. I see the responsive as very much like customer service oriented, and I think that's a good description of it. The community centered, I feel like there might be a part missing, like something that I hear from so many people. They're like, you guys, and this goes back to, I don't remember if it was one of the other ones that we got rid of, but, um, maybe the celebrate diversity one. But there's a celebratory component to it. Like we just, our staff loves to connect with residents and like, we are so, that sense of pride in our community, like transcends staff and, and community. And like, I literally had a friend say, your social media is so amazing, your Richfield social media, and the stories that you have on there, like just show the pride of your police, of yours, you know, they talked, they said, I've never seen a city be so proud about their amazing water, and then like the millions of responses by all the residents saying yes. But that's just like, there's a sense of pride, and that piece, I feel like should go in that community center too, because it's really strong in our staff. And like, it is one of the things that makes Richfield so awesome and like other, unlike another community. We're very tailored in like how our community partners with our staff. It's pretty seamless. Like you can't really tell sometimes out in community, like Penfest or other things, unity in the community, because it's this one and the same. Were you going to say something? No. Any other comments?
Council member Wayland.
Um, just to, I completely agree with that, and I think eve- like specifically the word celebrate is worth including, and I wonder that very last sentence, you could either make set goals and accomplish objectives, a list of three, and, and celebrate however you want to word it. Or I think set goals and accomplish objectives is sort of ambiguous enough that, um, you could pick one of those and add celebrate if you don't want to just make it longer.
I'll add, um, for the equitable, I don't know if it's consistent across all of them, but I think I see in lead the way, um, like, let's see, seeks to con- oh, seeks to continuously improve. Okay, I just wonder if, um, like, active sentences, so like, would make more sense. So we will reduce inequity, like Richfield focuses on reducing inequity by, or inequities by. I haven't checked that across, but I just feel, I don't, and that's probably a communications thing that I know nothing about, but like, is it active versus we will do or we? Yeah, I don't know. Other comments or questions? Okay, I think we can move on then. Oh, and we have 10 minutes. I don't know if we have, is there enough time?
I think we should probably transition to the council meeting.
Okay. Oh, we are done?
Yeah.
Cool.
Sorry.
Well, then we, this is perfect timing. So it sounds like there was a little bit of consensus around trying to make the mission and vision a little more Richfield specific, give it a little more something. We got some concrete, um, feedback on the other items. Was there, maybe I'll pass it to staff to just get a summary and any ask, last questions you may have.
Uh, no other questions, Lisa, man. I, I did hear that much more on the vision piece of it than the mission, but I do have, uh, I think the feedback that I need for both of them. I can make the changes specifically on the mission to make those pretty easy, and also, um, the feedback on the core values as well. I think it's pretty easy, but I think we might, uh, come back if it's okay with you for just a kind of quick, kind of add-on in the next month or two and just be like, all right, these are the changes we made, this is why I made them, I'll cut this presentation super down, and just, you know, get thumbs up, thumbs down hopefully, and just be able to start integrating all this.
Awesome. City manager Rodriguez.
So I, I also want to thank, um, communication manager Rueland for leading this process. This can, uh, you know, devolve into really wordsmithing and, um, and no one being satisfied. So I also appreciate all of your, uh, feedback. It has been specific and, uh, and appreciated. And I do think that the staff and the directors have also appreciated, uh, being a part of the process, and so.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Neil. We are so lucky to have you here at Richfield. Like, the amount of comments that I get around our communications work is just so many, and it is really, um, not comparable to what we see anywhere else. And I just think about city issues pre-Neil and post-Neil, after Neil, a lot of times. Because there really, there really was, like, our, it, it's just been amazing, the work that you've done. So thank you for this, Neil.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. We're always trying.